For the last minute, we're in session. This is called an order. First on the agenda is a staff report. Ms. Wagner.
A few items quickly to let you all know. Dan has included information on the finance department website, on sales and use tax information, historical information by month. So that's out there for folks to be able to take a look at. Yesterday morning, Chief and I met with representatives of FEMA and SEMA with regard to Amory Road. We had a lot of good information from them and they helped us through the process of application if Clay County was included in a disaster declaration. I know they were moving us to go to another location within Clay County that might assist us in any preparation. So we'll see what happens there. And we'll keep you advised. You may have noticed as you came in tonight, unless you didn't come along Main Street, repairs to disequal on Main and Arcos to complete. We should have the road open late tomorrow for me. And finally, I think you all were informed yesterday, but we have a cake over, a cookie cake over on the table to recognize our newly minted certified US program, Linda Dornan.
Congrats. You can write your own proclamation if you want.
That wasn't a good answer, did you doubt? I think you can make a cookie cake. It's crazy.
Okay. Well, no public comment, I guess.
There's no fear.
Anything else? All right. First item on the discussion for potential ballot issues, the GO bond issue. Dan's prepared to answer any questions.
And I would, if you all have information in your packet on election timing, results required at various times, a little bit of information about each of the elections. Staff really doesn't have a prepared report, but would seek direction from the board to help you all proceed on that. I would caution, as we have discussions particularly related to fuel tax and sales taxes, that from staff's perspective, I'm speaking for myself, but I think probably all of staff, in April or sometime after November, an election would be preferable from a standpoint of preparation, knowing what we'd be able to provide. But then also taking into consideration the fact that we are currently in the process for the strategic planning process. We will have recommendations and information out of that in October that can help us move forward. If we were to look at a November election, we would have to certify that language by August 20th. And so pulling that information around on a quick turnaround would... I think on a GO issue, we could develop that language and provide that on a pretty quick turnaround. And anything the board directs with regards to elected officials' term length, we can pull around. But I think, I would urge caution in looking at the other issues. With regard to the road district, that's presented. At any time you all want to submit that to the county commission and work with our legal advisor and our best process of being able to get that to them, and then it would be up to them to determine the timing.
How many signatures do we have now? I know Dirk turned it up.
We have, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, I probably closed it. I think it's supposed to be, I knew it was going for eight at one point.
So let's just go with that one first. Do we want staff to go ahead and get that submitted?
Yes, we'll see why not.
Do we want a motion in the vote? Circle by circle.
You can direct staff if you want, or you can make a motion.
I know it's probably five to one right now, so. Going with nodding heads. Can I get a motion to direct staff to submit this?
I'm going to direct staff to submit to Clay County the signatures for a road bridge district formation.
All right, second. Almiron, Shubert. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Four, two. Thank you. And that's something I got when that goes on the ballot, so.
Correct. And we'll keep you advised as we proceed with that.
Okay. Next item, the GO bond issue. Dan gave us kind of a breakdown on this, on what we have to reserve, what we'd be able to accelerate projects, so on and so forth. First item we have to discuss, because if we want to do it, it's a potential GO bond for streetscape. Does it sound freaky on that?
Yeah.
I'll jump in first. I think we need to do a meeting of staff before we go back to the board.
I would agree with that. I really have done a lot of thinking trying to do that today and have to read the list. I'm really wondering if we look more at maybe just the taxes themselves versus going out for another GO bond and creating more debt. And if the sales taxes were to pass, would we be able to do some of what we need to do without incurring more debt?
I agree. And even before we discuss the other sales taxes, and Dan kind of presented me the breakdown on what we've got locked over, and it's pretty thin. And it doesn't give us a lot of extra time, or get it done in that much time. So does anybody strongly support putting two and maybe not for another bond?
Not a big one.
Okay. All right. Let's kick it go later. Come back and revisit it in a year. All right. Let's go to F. Talk about all the taxes. Term length, I would like the officials. Carney put this in paper, that they're putting this on their ballot. I had a couple of folks contact me. Almiron, Shubert, do you have any comment? Does your hand reach? On the way on everyone? I think that's all. All of us heard it.
Well, when I first heard that, I thought there would be some advantages to it. I think I can see advantages and disadvantages. I think the advantage would be you'd always have a group of people together for two years now. And so maybe it'd be more advocates. But maybe the disadvantage is it might be harder to get people to run. They've got a four-year commitment, so. They could probably be a pretty good idea. But I can see advantages and disadvantages.
I know the last, this last election, the prior election, they're all in place. They're all opposed. That was a cost to us to run those elections. Not a significant cost, but it was a cost. Does anybody have a proposed law, term length, they'd like to see?
I think I did learn it in a mail, because I made the comment about three years versus four, but what I want was from there is either two or four. I don't know that maybe three was an option.
Right.
So then I was thinking on that, okay, if we went to a four, if it was voted on or passed to do a four-year, if that was on an April election, and you had Alderman and Vaughn that same ballot election, would they still go with just a two-year term if the four-year passed?
Yeah, because they're valid.
And then the next year, those would go to a four-year, so then...
Then you would create the staggered terms rather.
Yeah. Your staggered terms would be up, so then I think you would look at maybe three years together after a couple of years of that was in place. That's how I...
And on this, and on this one, it makes more sense to me to do it in November, because then you're running for a four-year term in April. It might be confusing to some if you see on there changing the term and then you're elected to a two-year term.
Right. I would like to see it probably on the November. Maybe in the general election from the standpoint, that's where you're going to get the biggest number of voters, like we said.
November in the general elections in November 2020 and November now?
Well...
Is there is, there is a question, or there is an election?
2020, you're doing the X, big elections. Does anybody want this on the 20th?
Well, just to mention, I mentioned this last time in talk too, but I am not in favor of expanding the terms beyond the two years where they're at right now. I think two-year terms keeps us most accountable to the voters and keeps us most in touch with the voters and where the will of the public is on certain issues. Keeps us accountable that, you know, if we decide to go willingly on something, then the public can hold us accountable next year. You do not have to wait three years to hold us accountable. So I, I am not in favor of getting expansion of the length of terms.
I'll piggyback on that. With all due respect to our, our public who's here, this is the body who's mostly the most responsive to their local government. There are multiple of us for the city of Smithville. I struggle with this one, because we should be as responsive to the public as we possibly can, and includes the will of the voter to change that thing. I feel like we want to get that. Same time, the fiscal responsibility, we see that we spent quite a bit of money in the past couple of years running elections where folks run for office. I kind of hope that this discussion might come from some of the strategic planning stuff. And I know we're kind of in the middle of that, but as we reconvene at, you would love to see this be one of the things that comes forward as a pay voters. What do you think?
So can we add this? Is everybody okay with doing that? Having this be part of the reconvene? A question at reconvene? And then maybe have as a topic for our board retreat next spring? Or works out after the retreat? Or the reconvene, reconvene is September 8?
Eighteen.
Does anyone want to add?
I'd say either that, I have some time that we need. And so maybe that's not literally the best. I'm worried it's going to be seriously being set up.
Okay. Okay. Everybody hear that?
I guess, you know.
I'd honestly, I would rather just put it up as soon as possible and just give people an opportunity to vote on it, but... I think, I think with this line more, participation.
I think the only concern I have with the November 2019 election is I don't think there's much else going to be on there. We'd be paying for the full election for this one either, which is pretty expensive. So that's why we...
Canada, Canada.
Yeah. That November election at Black House is more than two April elections, right?
So then if we're looking at the April one...
Which we overrun anyway.
Yeah. So then we...
Or the, or the general, the 2020 general. That would still give it...
The 2020 general will have less cost, because there will be more questions.
But then it would also be seventy-five percent.
That's right.
Seventy-five percent on the term limit as well. I thought that was sixty percent, no matter what the... That doesn't say...
Says, whatever this says indicates any question.
I thought that was on tax.
Yeah. Doesn't, we have to confirm that?
They could wait for an opinion from our people who may not even go to the election.
Right. Yeah.
But then if we waited until, the earliest would be the April 7th, 2020.
Yeah. Or the August.
And we would need to have that in by January 21st. So I mean, we still have some time.
Okay. Everybody get up ahead? Okay. E, C, and E. As Ms. Wagner mentioned, we're in the middle of strategic planning. We have seen some of the preliminary results and discussions around this. Public safety sales tax, we still need some help from folks in GFC. We want to even throw that on the ballot. Fuel tax and park sales tax.
Almiron, Shubert. I'm a huge supporter of putting the parks and sales tax. And that would give a lot of control to citizens on how they want to see their amenities in parks. They would basically try to control that.
Yep. Would you want to see that in the April election?
I'd love to see it in the April election.
In April, as opposed to, in November.
So that way we can do the strategic plan to see that, see what the citizens want.
And to help design, help with that.
Because then we might, like you mentioned, look at a bond at that same point possibly here. Anyone else?
This is one thing we hear the lab's most frequently, parks. Parks and broad parks, pools, etc.
Put this out and say you want something? Here we go.
I guess my question would be, would this be a forever sales tax? I mean, at some point, if we maintain all of our...
Yeah. I think with the capital improvement, we did twenty-three year sunset?
It's true.
Twenty-year sunset? I mean, I think...
You can do, you could do one that doesn't...
It sounds like the consensus around the table is that's referred, right?
Those are the conversations. And if we're having some conversation during the strategic planning and provide some of, you know, whether it's election, perhaps this, something else we can start working with data, just throw in some stuff out to that group of, all right, we know there are these issues out here. There are some ways to be able to address this. What is taking the temperature of those who are participating in the process with regard to their support for that? And maybe that could become something that comes recommendation on that.
And can we write that? And can you write it as a quarter set, quarter set operations ability? So that, and one...
And that's one of the things, now that we have some of this discussion and a whole bit more information, those are things we can research.
Okay. Because I think an operator's a quarter set, you could get more buy-in to keep that ongoing versus building something that...
I guess. And one thing I want to double check as well, if I recall correctly, I think the language that outlines the park sales tax also allows a half cent total for parks and/or storm grenades. Wait, those are all things we can get that additional information on a little bit.
Okay. All of us?
I was really looking more at the local field tax. The standpoint of his park and rents tax, the money that would get released in the general fund, then can be used for other things. The local fuels tax, with that being more focused, and I'm reading here, maintenance, repair, policing. I'm leaning more, I like that one more. I understand your minuteness. But when I read the local fuels tax and what it says in here, what all that could be used for? Would that in one way end up me bringing up more money?
That is a really good question. Dan and I were talking about this today. We weren't able to come up with estimates of what would be generated, because as we outlined here, the money we get for the fuel tax, we get on a periodic basis from states. So everything that they collect, we get based on our population. So we really don't know what the volume of sales of gasoline in Smithville is. So it's kind of unknown what a one cent sales tax we generate. So I think we need some time to be able to explore that, understand it, and then also understand kind of those parameters of what can be funded with it. Because it was my understanding in my initial conversations with Stewart at MML that it wasn't allowed, policing wasn't allowed. But it's very clear in the language that policing is there in the constitutional language. So I think there's some clarification, and we need to understand that a little better. Again, we can do that research, provide that information, have some additional discussion and more session here, and then as well, provide David that information for discussion on strategic planning to get community to put on that, if that's the way the board want to look at it.
I think my quick math, when I was digging into what gas stations typically sell and talking to some of the gas stations I know, it would be about eighty-five thousand dollars here. You're about four thousand gallons a day out of a gas station. You've got three here.
Because Dan and I talked about, oh, let's look at sales tax information from our gas stations here, but that's not, that's not the information to use it in the...
Yeah. Typical gas station is about four thousand gallons a day.
In policing aspect, I mean, that's how the state power tools funded through the Missouri fuel tax.
Fuel tax, yeah.
That will go back on about probably two and a half years from what I've been hearing as well.
My one, my one concern with the sales taxes is that going in without having all the information either, especially with the new development going in at their Smithville marketplace. You look at what Carney did, when that price shock that went in, their sales taxes were now at about five hundred thousand dollars, what they're collecting. So I just, I think any discussion here is almost premature just because we don't have all the data with this shit to know what kind of, you know, number we've been looking at, whether it's, you know, four parks, four community center, or anything along those lines. We just don't have all the data right now. And we'll have better data in twelve to eighteen months that we can make a better decision on.
So I guess I'd ask, when Carney was saying five hundred thousand is that before you take off, someone has a TIP project? Is that the total sales tax, or what we're looking back to the city?
That is what they, when I looked at the current budget class, what they had coming in as their sales tax, you know, budget and income, from right before price shock, this was your 2014, it was nine hundred seventy thousand, and it's one point six million now. And some of that also went in because they just passed the one cent sales tax increase last year as well. So taking away some of that, it's about a five hundred thousand dollar increase. Now, we've also, the economy's been through the past couple of years, so that plays into the number as well. But just what they, we price shock to it, they are now, it's about a half million dollar difference.
Price shock on the new building?
Correct.
And the boat division taking location?
No.
Well, it changes, it changes right as well. It was where that, where the new, early education center was now. It was, where's big being, was the price shock coming in?
Same developer, it was the same, I agree here.
I wonder if Chang, you know, if the cash push would rather go to go bond with a park right?
Well, the, the... Yeah. And the bond would have to be, if we look at yours, community center something as well.
If we were to issue debt, we would have to have a funding source for it. Like what we're in with construction employer, the streetscape, you know, we have that to account for.
That we kind of go hold the cash push.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think, you know, I think we all want to see what comes out as a strategic plan, if we're going to put these on the ballot or not. Or if people really want a community center or pool, or whatever it is. Well, we might get a surge at the beginning too on the sales tax. We might have to maintain it too, because if we're going to stay conservative on it, we'll look at existing numbers if we want to.
Something else, I'm not, you know, I don't like creating a lot of more debt. The other thought I had, okay, so we pass the sales tax, let's say it passes. And then it's really generating more than we even thought it would of looking at a certificate of participation at that point versus a GO bond, because then you would have the funding in place maybe to do the repayment to that certificate of participation, maybe on a shorter term than going with the GO bond. Just another, just trying to really think across every option available to us. So my question would be, I know you have interest on a certificate of participation, you also have interest payments back on a GO bond. Are those interest rates possibly comparable? Or not? Or would be, and you're paying more on a certificate of participation interest wise?
Are they ever comparable that I can talk to?
And then with the certificate of participation, would we also have those other fees that we had with the issuing of the bonds?
Yes.
There's always, there's that cost of insurance.
Okay. Well, if we wouldn't have that cost, kind of lean more towards the certificate of participation.
What you're talking about is asking what they've seen the most on a, you know, big community center type project, or pool project, or parts project, if it's either a bond or a CIP. That sounds like you want to see what happens with the strategic planning and...
And if you want more research, we can do as staff, be able to provide you some various options for what types of financing we could be looking at, timing of elections, some research into revenue generation. And, you know, as we move forward, as Alderman, former indicated, you know, as we move forward in development of this, we'll have different ideas as well. And Dan and I were just talking today, as we were looking at revenue projections for next year, you know, it's, we're kind of swagging it for our sales tax projections, but we hope to see some impact in the next several months from that, because fifty percent of those sales taxes come in.
Well, Nikki and I just had a meeting this morning with the business owner, he's kind of new here from a neighboring town, so.
Right. I think there are all kinds of things that can have an impact. You know, one of the things that we looked at as well is, this is just kind of setting the tone, we've talked a lot lately, that we've not had commercial permits. We're starting to see commercial development approved in our zoning process. We'll start seeing those come in. We've had a pretty high number in last year with one hundred and eighty-ish building permits, were all residential. We're seeing that downtick, but we're seeing some uptick on the commercial side. So that's the other thing that Dan and I are trying to balance and looking at those revenues. If we can look at a consistent level of revenues, it's a different composition. And so then once the buildings come in, those retail buildings, what impact do they have on other types of market sources? So we're going to continue to monitor that. But I think it will all have an impact, and we'll be more green and relax, like Alderman and Horford said, in the next twelve, eighteen months, it will be interesting to see those.
Sounds good. Any other discussion on the ballot questions?
I think, I want to go back to what I would say, you know, you could get that, because that has to come from state legislature. Just the, you know, the understanding of that, if we wanted that done, you know, be a way, you know, writing that language for the projected population of making sure that we hit within that parameter of adding Smithville to that issue. And then if it were to be presented this next session, it wouldn't go into effect till August 28.
Right.
So that puts that further.
Yeah.
I just want to make sure everybody understood that.
Yeah. So I think there's your question in this, and that we want to pursue, because we would need to start taking a look at that and thinking about it, the sponsor and those sorts of things.
I think we should. I think we try to find representative.
I think we might be able to find someone who might have an interest in law enforcement. I'm not sure, we got a committee, I don't think.
So I think...
I just wanted to share that as the time.
Yeah. It's one we have to... You know, with the beginning of 2018? When's the date for August election? Or November election?
Yeah. Yeah. So we would be, so I don't know that it's, I think, and if I can put words in your mouth, Alderman and Wilson, it probably is, the first priority obviously is enabling legislation to get that, so that we're able to do that, have that tool in our toolbox for the future, further down the road.
Yeah. Yeah. We get it in the next session. And I think we can do our population projections based on census.
Census.
No, we're submitting. And, and you mentioned building permits? It's twenty, residential this year so far?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. That's a long ways from one hundred and eighty.
Yeah.
So estimating future housing with twenty-seven building permits.
But we're seeing revenues are just about the same spot, because some of the commercial permits have been...
Okay. Any other discussion? Before we move on to number five? Dan's got a PowerPoint, I'll keep it up and ready for us. Okay. Dan, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I will do a quick run through summary of why we're here talking about transportation. Okay. So this is our transportation sales tax plan. Our listing for the next five years, which you've all seen before. This is unchanged as it sits right now from the last time we talked about it, which was the June work session, actually. So here's the same list. I've added some labels made for them of those projects and mapped them out on the city's real map, so that we can all see that where these projects are located and get them understanding that we have kind of touched every corner on that here with this, with this listing. That was provided in the pack and as well. Back to kind of the main conversation, and I apologize that these don't have yours on top, but this is your twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, so kind of what we've got here. And in this one, we have a revenue projection for the next five years, some non-CIP expenditures, and we've got that up here, and then our CIP expenditures. And the dollar amounts for ending cash balance in those years are all positive. They are divining a little bit, because we're investing in our infrastructure to pay. However, the big topic of the conversation was if these, if these dollars all get spent by June 30th, which most of those projects do, we do try to leave in the spring of that year, our cash balance at June 30th isn't necessarily best, and it does, it does earn to the revenue. end to revenue. So in this first year, just ten thousand dollars in the red as of June thirtieth, and looking back at this chart that we talked about, we know we have this sixty thousand dollar engineering project listed here, which may easily be pushed back until later in the summer or even fall and solve that nine thousand dollar cash flow issue. As we look forward to these next few years, this is not, this is not fifty thousand this year and additional fifty thousand year and additional fifty thousand year. This basically shows that once in this year's plan, if all of that three hundred eighty-five gets spent over June thirtieth, we have a cash flow issue that kind of carries itself forward all these other years. So the hope here, or the solution is two-fold. We either hope that some combination of these projects come in fifty thousand dollars under these numbers that we have here, or we either start playing with moving some of these around or delaying one of these two projects until summer comes instead of the spring comes, and trying to come up with a better plan of how we can solve that, that cash flow issue. So at the June work session, it was asked to see some additional information on each of these projects. So I put together this presentation, and in your packet, there is a listing with a map of all these projects, and that includes some traffic counts, if we have those available, just kind of some traffic accounts, not too much of a tangent, but for those, especially these roads that are in here, we are going to be putting together a traffic count schedule, if you will, especially if some decisions are going to get tonight on which of these roads are our highest priorities, get out and get some counts on these roads so that we have that intention there. If you go through the packet, a lot of those counts, we have, most of them are from two thousand fifteen, some of them are from two thousand twelve. So in that packet, you have a map showing kind of the general area of each of these projects, as well as a short description of the project itself. And in here, this presentation, I include some photos so we can have a conversation. I want us to know, if my expectation of this is to run through all thirteen projects that there are, and then get some feedback from you, or do you want to have a little bit of a talk after, during each one?
I don't think you have the time or...
You can technically.
You got that in the file.
So first project is around about an average work of just a highway, this is engineering only, this is for the Greyhawk subdivision, the only item I've included here is a map of this location where it'd be, the new Greyhawk parts of that subdivision over here to the west.
And one thing to note there is, Dan indicated this would be engineering only, the developer would be responsible for the construction, but we would be responsible for the engineering. So I think our recommendation is now is that's something that probably needs to be put down sooner than later, so that we have that engineer ready to go when they're ready to build that.
If maybe we all want to, when they want to develop that?
I think you'll start seeing that late next year potentially.
They're kind of rose that way.
Yeah, they're, they're getting to the point where they're full up on the areas they've already gone and had access, they're going to be...
Second project here is the sidewalks and storm surfs on Herschel Avenue, this is between Meadow and Hospital Drive. It's essentially a set A for ten thousand, we'll do this project in-house with our personnel, that ten thousand is just materials. And really what we've got here is the storm surfs being higher than actual sidewalks, lots of weed grow through the sidewalks, the owner can come here and clean this up and make this all available.
It's partly covered through the sidewalk program?
It's also, it is now.
And one of the reasons we could identify this is we look at doing this half commercial sidewalk project, you know, we'll have better connections there than to improve our connection to downtown at ten thousand dollars, we thought that was really good investment.
Third project on this is the continuation of the micro-surfacing project. This was originally in the two thousand nineteen budget, and we put it on a delay because we were going to have some construction going on down, and this is going to get my issues through there. So fifty-five thousand dollar budget that we moved into the twenty twenty CIP plan.
So on this one, based on sort of construction, what's going to be doing, Smithville Villas and even the marketplace, I think it would take a little while. I don't think this one should be in the twenty, but, and I don't, I wasn't a little too impressed with my micro-surfacing cap, because it's like going forward. Yeah, so is anybody else, is everyone feeling that's putting that on hold at that point?
And about that, is there something you could talk about?
I don't know, we talked to a contractor and spots is all apart, are there spots that's all apart?
Well, I think one of the things also, micro-surfacing is not a fix. Micro-surfacing is a temporary cosmetic approach, but it, it's not a long...
You can see in that picture, go back to the last picture with the sidewalks.
I'm actually, it was kind of embarrassing, right?
Yeah, go back to the street.
And that stuff just came out, you know, and all of a sudden, I can be careful, it's a downswing or cracking or...
Well, it is, it's, if you look at the pictures too, it's sloppy, I mean, it goes over the curve. It just doesn't, I mean, if we save the money and just do an asphalt overlay with the future, I think it would look a lot better than last one. We try, we see what the result is.
I think county is not the point, county doesn't micro-surface roads anymore.
Yeah, and this was a contract that was shared with Black County, right? Is there a...
Yes, yeah, Black County doesn't do micro-surfacing.
All right, so I just, get rid of it. As the school and the villages and everything else, doing construction on that, the parts and partial and whatever else they're called here, I was following, let's say, what the cost for asphalt overlay of the future.
That, and I let sales take care of some of our cash flow issue.
Well, then I'll be, I'll do the rest for cash flow issue.
Okay, so project D is Quicksilver Bar and Asphalt Overlay Curves and Stormwater. The engineering for this project is in this current year budget, we'll be bringing in our propositions to you guys soon. We would like to recommend HGR for this because it's not listed right here, but it's probably the replacement of the water line and heart of that structure. So there's two hundred thousand just in asphalt curves and stormwater bar, and the water line track is, is in the water base side from CIP project.
So on this one and the next two asphalt overlays, I think, talk this a little more. I would like to see our public works director get hired, we do give that in the next year's budget, and make our information about some of these roads, let's see if we can bundle the overlays in twenty-one, so we're not mobilizing every single year, and see if we can get some savings, and waiting for our line and curves and stormwater to get done, and then maybe the asphalt bank to shut down again, like during the streetscape, I don't want to get into that situation again in, in twenty.
And one of the things we didn't talk about when we talked about this, I would recommend that we continue to look at the curb stormwater and utility org and just separate that, that two, about two hundred thousand dollars, the piece of that that we need to do the other infrastructure piece and then overlay layers.
I would say take out the asphalt from D and then put E and F and everything that's in twenty-one asphalt overlay all together, and maybe see if with those savings, if we could boot up some of the, the hundred and seventy-six street for twenty-two and twenty-one, while they're mobilized and they're up here, just extra asphalt and power for that one. And if we get a public works director in here and they tell us, no, I'm not going to save this any money, then we can go back and look at it, but I think they're...
Well, I think that, as we look at that as something that, and when I first wore my recommendation for budget in August, I will have a recommendation for public works director. One of the things that they're reviewing that, they can assist us all side in looking at those priorities for those projects, or those really what we see as priorities in the decade.
And I drove all these streets to the alter, every single one of those houses, the ones that aren't on the map that we're doing, it's concrete to show the scale, and the roads are, the driveways are gravel. So watch them most time, I mean, next year on a road that the driveways are pretty long gravel drivers. And the roads are pretty easy to shake, until you get to the hill right before the end of the set.
Okay, so just to clarify, I can, there was, on project D, stretch asphalt overlay...
Just move it to twenty-one.
All, just the asphalt.
Yeah.
So in twenty, we just move the water line curves and stormwater.
Yes.
Move the asphalt overlay of this project as well as potentially that project.
D and F and...
F.
Yep.
To G and H, all of those.
And see if you can get J into twenty-one with our change of cash flow based on that, and change estimates based on less mobilization.
But J rather than I?
Yes.
Well, and what I would propose then as well is that we've not...
Or we can get both.
Yeah, I think not.
If we can get both of them.
Well, and those priorities, I think these, we can have a double check of those priorities from a payment management standpoint, kind of that analysis.
Because hundred thirty-four is pretty much gravel, right? We said one year ago, should it still?
Yes, it should, it's a...
Was it two years ago?
Of course, the...
Or the Boston?
Or the...
Israel, or you got all right, yeah.
Here it is.
Pretty quick now.
So if we can move that up a year, by the same time mobilization, adjust our cash flows, if we have one point on the table next year?
I wonder if there's something else that makes there to, what you're saying, and Dan and I have a lot of conversation about this, but in looking at our sales tax projections based on...
Right.
Those make touch cash flows.
The marketplace?
Yeah.
We've heard that it's a marketplace.
So, so on my, on my other side, we moved Colter and Second Street from twenty to twenty-one, and I moved hundred thirty-fourth and hundred seventy-sixth from twenty twenty-two up to twenty twenty.
No, twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Just in twenty-one.
It's all asphalt overlay in twenty-one. Minus the question in the bottom.
Quincy overlay, it also moved to twenty-one?
So, no, I was just getting asphalt overlays of twenty-one and twenty-two here. You can do engineering, your curb, the maple lane one, that's already a twenty-three, but if you figure it out, so you get the asphalt overlays in a bunch.
Well, what we may look at then as well is when we plug in, because CIP, we're looking at different specific projects, have level amounts.
Yeah, and then I'm like, hey, you got asphalt overlay for stormwater once again, that's engineering. It says engineering, but there's a asphalt overlay for storms, is that all? Fifteen thousand dollars seem like a bit of asphalt.
It's fifteen, yeah, fifteen, just to get, get the engineering done in the project that we have.
And this day is the project, which is already slated for twenty-three. So the only two in twenty-two would have been hundred thirty-fourth and hundred seventy-sixth, that's where we potentially move them up here.
Correct.
That, does that work for everyone? I guess it gets hundred thirty-fourth, hundred seventy-sixth, but it lays the ones up, they're not corporal shape, Quincy, Colter, Quincy would be tearing out, that's going to be on us for the next set, but I don't want to wait for water delay.
And then the stormwater, the other usually won't there, really dusty.
Yeah, it needs to be done, and they will have it there, so the spring of twenty-two versus all the way along, it's not going to be much difference. And we'll tear it out as soon as we put it down, and we can get it back there, so...
Spring of twenty or twenty, twenty, yeah, yeah.
Spring of twenty, spring of twenty-one.
Right, yeah. And also, if we know now what we're looking at, just to make sure we get things designed to be ready a bit, I mean, I recommend, and I think this will be something, obviously, for the public works director as well, but we're too good at already done late in a fiscal year for the coming, late in the calendar year for the coming calendar year, so that we can, um...
Put it out to November one.
November one or shortly thereafter, so there's a plan in work that goes into that with all the contractors.
So that would give you... Four hundred, give you four hundred thousand dollars for a break next year, give you an extra volume here? That helps your cash balance issue. Yeah, absolutely. So one question I ask you on Rock Creek?
Yes.
That's a relatively new subdivision, what's the mean that it is falling apart? And they're sort of figuring equipment, it's a position to go to pass, and that's why I like it, but why does that happen? That's a good question.
Because it's our revenue, and that's, that's one of the things that as we look at government standards and inspections, we want to see improvement.
That was...
Have a look, or less.
It's about a three-year or something to that. Well, it was planned a long time ago, but it stopped. When I, we came up here, I think they had one or two houses in there, right?
One, I can remember.
Yeah, there was like one house.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it's set for years.
They had one house in there.
Yeah.
And all of those, and street lights, it was set for years.
Yeah.
And I will say, that's not necessarily atypical, I know, in subdivision enrollment in Lawrence, the sidewalks were poor before actual construction occurred, because you had construction trucks pulling over those and everything, and the industry occurred with the, with the streets, because you had, that construction traffic is horrible in the streets, so it's not, it's frustrating, it's not atypical.
And my understanding is after this development could end, that our standard to the rate...
Correct, yes, yes, and we also have additional training staff need to monitor just type of those.
And on Rock Creek, I don't know, I'm sure Chief Shaw is very serious, but they have rounded out, or they have improved cul-de-sacs, just a plan of their areas, and they'll have to do them out, I think there's some planning, they're just building corporal, we have to fix all that, we need to, we need that. Every, every cul-de-sac has like a little iron, it's supposed to be planted or something, but there's B tip. I'd like to see it worked out, because asphalt overlay that...
We can take a look at design, we could be like...
So kind of going back, I'd really like to take a look at, you know, where we have all of them, we've got one of my, which is our subdivision, and a lot of agents have them, having their most of them a three-year old loan for having to do this much on. I live alone, that's about to have a bunch of contraption to go through with, too.
Yeah, because once you get a post Shannon with our legs and everything, we've got a lot of miles.
I'm curious, I'm looking, I'm looking at it. We have several that are right at twenty-five here.
Do you have any of the twenty, the twenty-five year markets not on this list?
I'm trying to mind this, and I tried to kind of throw it together. Twenty is about the rest, and...
Well, the...
Twenty is about forty-eight. Harborview twenty-three, Kendrick X about twenty-one, Cedar Lakes about twenty-five, Stone Red about twenty-three, those are Shannon, Barton Heights twenty, Laclede twenty-three, and Forests about twenty-one. That's a lot to do at the same time.
Yes, I think Forests is just talking about adding the rest of the lots as well, which would be more construction, but I don't know if there is any more of that.
So what was the price going on there?
Well, probably the number between twenty thousand and twenty-three, yeah. Rock Creek's pretty small, it's a one sixty-five, so I think a lot of that cost to just mobilization because eight miles between those two is a pretty significant difference, between Rock Creek and Harborview.
So fast forward to twenty-five, fifty years, we're getting one, I'm sure on two. I think they'll come to...
And I think that, that would be some additional, public works director can help us with something about, and we need another time to scan.
So Dan, I guess you're...
Yeah, I can take you back, and I don't know if we need, I mean, I can probably do something around it to revise this chart, and give like a new packet for...
Yeah, or we could, yeah.
And have for any discussion.
So we have included in my reports, they will have it for information, we can provide you that, that way.
Yeah, and I'd like to see if we do get any savings out of these projects by combining them, you know, what we can do with more sidewalks and stormwater, I think we have means at the first.
Well, and that's what we could look at is, you know, I know we've got the list of those needs, so we could, like, yeah, possibly. names, so we could do a lot of that, yeah, possibly.
Cause if South Commercial and Nast is paying us ten thousand dollars, what can we do on Bridge Street where the stuff's sinking or on, I don't know, like, what I really knew about his name, but housing is already...
The schools, we're gonna redo some asphalt, too, but I just, uh, Eagle Lakes has new asphalt, uh, the school, the main campus has new asphalt, and they'll probably get some, we should.
Thanks, Dan. Anything else, any questions for Dan? Okay, take a little break right there, see if there's any, uh, who's up there, so I can ask you a question.
There's Chris P. K.
There's Chris P. K., I forgot.
Hold on, I'm gonna figure it out.
Second?
Second.